This meeting is called to water. This is the August 13th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We'll get right into the preliminaries. Could I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or voted. Have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 23rd meeting?
So.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or voted. Announcements. Does anyone have any announcements this evening? And town manager's report. Mr. and Mrs. Card, do you have anything to report to the board?
Yeah, I'd like to update a couple of things if I may. I'll start with solid waste collections and follow up from the report of July 23rd from Assistant Manager Lass. I am happy to report that we're experiencing notable improvement in the performance of the daily routes, including Thursdays, which was our biggest struggle point where the largest number of residences are collected. The board will recall, and residents know that on consecutive Thursdays and Fridays, not all recycled was collection from those routes on those days. For the past three weeks, including yesterday, and including yesterday, all routes have been completed on time and on a daily basis. And I'm certainly frustrated with, as I know the rest of the board is, over the performance for the first three weeks, but waste management has been very responsive. Again, they have met all their daily route requirements for the most recent three weeks. And they've done this by adding resources to the town, increasing the number of trucks from four to five on a daily basis. And additionally, on Thursdays, they've increased the number of trucks that they have in town from five up to seven. So those resources in place have been very effective and allow us, or allow for them to meet the performance requirement of the contract. We also experienced a significant reduction in calls that have come into Town Hall and to Waste Management. For the last, over the last week to 10 days, Town Hall is just averaging two calls per day. And I encourage residents to continue to make those calls to the Town Hall if they need to. Waste Management, the 1-800 number is always your best bet, best bet for the prompt customer service that they will provide and assign you with a ticket number and do so and collect your materials in accordance with the contract. Just a reminder for everyone to continue to have their materials out by 7:00 a.m. and remember which recycling week it is, this week being yellow, which means it's paper. We're also undertaking an educational initiative, a program called Recycling IQ that we've talked, started talking about with the board. We actually have town staff out in the field, starting this week, just reviewing recycling, noting times that it's out and what materials are in the bins. We can kind of get a baseline of what contamination may be out there, and we'll start tagging in about two weeks and having more interaction with residents to keep our recycling as clean as possible. And the main, the main purpose behind that initiative is the cleaner our recycling, the less it costs for us to have our recycling disposed of in a proper way through Casella. And it makes a huge impact on our budget and the cost of our solid waste collection program. So we're happy with the progress that we've had with Waste Management. We have met with them at least three times over the last three or four weeks. And given that the changes have largely surrounded the Thursday route, we have started conversations with them about what prudent near-term steps we may be able to make to alter the routes to relieve that burden and make sure that we can accomplish the daily routes. No changes will be made until we come back to this board and have a conversation and provide adequate information out to the public about what changes we're considering and when those changes will be implemented. Sometimes we're able to finish Monday and Tuesday routes by like 2:30 in the afternoon, but even with the additional trucks, given the size of a Thursday route, we're still working till 5:30 and 6:00 in the evening. And that's not fair to the Thursday residents. So if we can shift that burden, we'll be able to perform a little bit better. But we'll be back to the board to discuss that once we do some analysis on, on the routes over the next few weeks. Staying on the solid waste front, simple recycle has begun with the pink bags. During the first month of operations in July, we collected five tons of materials. So that's $100 in revenue to the town. But more importantly, it also foregoes the tipping fee at Wheelabrator when we're disposing of solid waste. So get nearly $90 to $100 of ton, per ton of savings. So we're happy about the performance of that program. And moving on to solid waste. So I just wanted to take a couple minutes and acknowledge that, you know, staff are well aware, and we've been talking to folks and acknowledging that, you know, the passage of the citizens petition at Town Meeting this spring. We're working with DEP consultants, as we stated, to develop a solution to reduce the amount of hex chrome that's in our drinking water supply. But with reduced staffing, we haven't had the opportunity to create that new webpage that was requested of us. So we are doing the work behind the scenes, and we will be building the website and sharing that information with residents about our new pilot program that we're developing with a company called Ad Edge to develop a biological solution to remove the hex chrome from the water supply and other kind of, other pilot programs that we are considering at this time as well. I also wanted to let the board know that we are going to start flushing, start our flushing earlier than normal this fall to help reduce the sediment that some residents are still experiencing, and that should begin within the next three weeks. And during, before this flushing cycle, we're going to follow a new unidirectional hydrant flushing plan that has been developed specifically for our water system. And we hope that this planned approach, based upon our system needs and best practices, should be even more effective than previous flushing activities that we've performed. And we'll certainly inform the board and all residents in the areas that we'll be working in prior to starting any of those activities. One final thing for water. We'll be holding a meeting semi-related to water on Thursday, August 29th, at 7:00 in this room, for residents to discuss the Lake Street Road closure related to the Beal project. We'll also be doing waterline work in Lake Street and be able to inform residents of when that will occur. So again, that's 7:00 on Thursday, August 29th, for anyone that's interested in hearing more about the Lake Street Road closure, which will occur in early September and last approximately into early December. And finally, this evening, I just wanted to inform the board that I do see a need for a special Town Meeting this fall. We'll have a number of articles, some standard articles, including the transfer of funds from free cash as it relates to water revenues. We'll be developing a list of articles to bring to the board, but I would like to pencil in Monday, October 21st, to check the board's availability for a special Town Meeting that night. We'll be developing a memo out to departments to call for articles and detailed steps in action for all Town Boards and committees that we'll share. So that's all I have this evening.
Good. Does anybody have any questions?
I actually, I wanted to go back to solid waste for just a second. I know we were talking earlier about sometimes a street gets missed as far as the collection goes, and if a resident calls Waste Management and they agree that, yes, the street was missed, people might not know, because it might have happened after work hours, to put their stuff back outside. And then I think that there's frustration when the truck comes back at 7:10 in the morning and they hadn't put stuff back out. So is it best for residents, if they know their street's been missed and they have made the call to Town Hall or Waste Management, to then go ahead and put their materials back out on the curb?
Yes, always leave, yeah. Always leave the materials out or put them back out the next morning once, you know, if the street was missed, then it will be, we'll be back the next morning to pick it up.
Thanks.
The important part of that, though, is they need to make sure they call so that Waste Management knows that they've missed the route.
Right.
Because if they don't call in and just post it on Facebook, and posting on Facebook is fine, but if they don't call in to either Town Hall or Waste Management, it could, it could just be, you know, missed and nobody would know. So I think we got to keep reminding people of that. They shouldn't have to do it, but until everybody gets comfortable, the drivers and that with the routes and gets familiar with them, it may happen. So their service will improve more quickly if, if, if we know that there's a problem.
Just a follow-up. The postman comes to my house, he brings out this square thing, beeps it on my mailbox, closes it, and leaves. Post office knows he's there every day at about a certain time. I'm astonished that a company of that size could miss a street and simply not know. They have no way of hitting a button or in some way memorializing that they have completed Walnut Street or something like that?
So all trucks have GPS on it, so you can go in the system and look at it and see when they run the routes? We experienced missing a section of a street this week. It was due to a summer vacation and a new driver. So we don't have that, you know.
But they do at headquarters, don't they?
They can view the GPS and review the routes. I don't know that they do that proactively or.
I think it would be reasonable if you would ask them to, every day by 3:00 o'clock or so, or 2:00 or whatever, in advance of the closing of that day's activity, so they would know if in fact they've missed Walnut Street north of Route 9. And I would think that's obvious to somebody at a monitor, that they could then contact the vehicle and make that second run back, rather than asking the resident to, to guess whether or not it's been done or call something. I'm astonished that they don't have technology according to the post office so that you would have some sense of what you've accomplished for the day. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, I, I do have one announcement. And, you know, I apologize if it was announced at the last meeting because I was on vacation, but Deputy Chief Card retired after, I believe, it was 43 years on, on the department. And, you know, that's, that's the end of a generational shift, because his father was on for about 40 years also, and had become a captain. And I just was made aware today that firefighter Pignataro, who had, I believe, over 30 years, his last day was today. So we thank them all for their service and wish them the best. Okay. Next order of business is our 7:05 hearing, our meeting with Michael Tomiolo, Poke Enterprises LLC, for a one-day entertainment license for a one-year anniversary party on Wednesday, August 28th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Atlantic Poke, 193 Boston Turnpike Road. Good evening. So could you just tell us, obviously you have an anniversary, but what are you doing in regards to the music and sound?
Yes, so I plan to just have it, it's going to be from 5:00 to 8:30. It's going to be a family event. We are going to have live music, but it's going to be kind of kept in that outdoor area. For, for the growth and development for the, for the party. So I'm, I'm planning on roping off that area so it keeps it, keeps everything in that area. We're going to hire outside caterer, struck catering, who has fully licensed and insured to do a cash bar for me, so they'll completely take care of that. But making it, you know, just keep the sound on that area. And we'll be, the sound will be off by the time it gets dark out, 8:30, we're going to cut the sound off, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
Nope. Okay. So that's good. So you're not going to 12:00 for the people in the pod now? Should be bouncing off the walls.
No, not at all. I want to close my doors and lock up too, so.
So this is not a public hearing, it's just a meeting. We heard what the applicant wants to do. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary. Appreciate it.
Again.
Okay, our next order of business is a public hearing for Kamal Patel, owner of Sperry Supa Liquors, Inc., DBA Sperry Supa Liquors, 299 Hartford Turnpike, for transfer of an off-premise all alcohol license from Eastbrook, Inc., 299 Hartford Turnpike, a pledge of collateral and a change of hours to Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Thank you. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself before we start?
My name is Attorney Ian Hedges. I'm here on behalf of Kamal Patel regarding the transfer of a Section 15 all alcohol package store license. As you mentioned, getting transfers from Eastbrook Incorporated to Sperry Supa Liquors One Incorporated. Kamal is the sole shareholder and manager, proposed manager of the location. She has about six years of retail experience, five of it being in the liquor store industry. As you mentioned, there will be a change of hours. I believe it'll be open an hour earlier, Monday through Saturday, and then open three hours later on Sundays. But other than that, no change of floor plan, no change of DBA. Everything else, like that is staying the same.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board?
Nope.
So essentially, same operation, a little bit different hours?
Correct.
How many people do you, would you have working there? Just curious.
Probably two.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, we're all familiar with the location and the business that's there, so not going to change much. We're not going to have many questions. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay, there being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, close the hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or voted? Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the license application with Kamal Patel, owner of Sperry Supa Liquors, Inc., DBA Sperry Supa Liquors, 299 Hartford Turnpike, for a transfer of an all, of an off-premise all alcohol license from Eastbrook, Inc., 299 Hartford Turnpike, a pledge of collateral and change of hours to Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or voted? Okay, next step, application goes off to Boston, okay? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we have a joint meeting with the Beal Building Committee to hear an update on the progress of the building project. Representatives who are going to fill us in, come, come up to the table, please.
Mr. Chairman, while people are assembling, we have the, just about the full building committee here in the event there are any questions. We had a meeting earlier to, this evening as well. The project remains on schedule. Reimbursements from the MSBA are on target. The current budget is holding. The big event is the demolition ongoing right now, and the preparations for the realignment of Lake Street, including its closure, come September. So I will now step aside, and I think you'll enjoy the rather thorough presentation of where we stand as of today.
So before we start, for the public, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sean Burnett, project architect, Lamro Pagano Associate Architects.
Hi, I'm Natalie Gabriel, architect at Lamro Pagano Associates.
And I'm Walter Hartley. I'm the owners' project manager with PMA Consultants.
Good evening. As Mr. Kane stated, we are on schedule. We also are on budget. Get a little more into the details, the 100% steel and concrete drawings went out just a few days ago to being bid by Fontaine Brothers, soliciting bids from multiple steel erectors and concrete companies. They'll be finalizing those bids and leveling them come the end of the month. And we're also on a parallel track estimating the remaining scope of the work, which is all the trade bidders, the filed subbidders, the remaining portions of the project. So then, come the end of the month, we will be presenting a reconciled estimate with some hard figures in it and some estimated figures to the school building committee for approval, and those will be made public to everybody in town. From there, come the end of September, we're publishing final documents, and then we're targeting mid to late October for the final GMP. So we'll have the all-in price from Fontaine Brothers. You guys will finally see where construction pricing will land. And as mentioned previously, the road closure is coming up shortly, and construction has started, if you've been able to. We haven't been in front of you guys in a little bit, so we figured it'd be a little more thorough with kind of our update and give you a sense of where the design has gone and where we're at. You may or may not recall Lake Street, there, we are doing a realignment, taking away some of that vertical realignment and some of the horizontal realignment. Get people to slow down in that area, it is going to be posted for a school zone, and also just better improve the sightlines. So as you come in from the north, that's where parents will come in, they'll circulate around the outer ring road and come into where you see all those nice colorful paintings on the paved play area for the students. Those are four-square hopscotch, just kind of a little racetrack. Also help kind of direct traffic. And then parents will drop off to a lower lobby that you'll see some graphics of later on. The main parking lot will handle actually all of the staff parking and visitor parking handicap. We have some electrical vehicle charging stations. We have some electrical vehicle, just preferred spots also located there. And then the main entry is right off of there with a designated pedestrian walkway right through that main parking lot to keep everybody safe. There's some overflow parking further down on the map, and then we have some synthetic play areas for the students, fully accessible to all. We have some fully accessible structures themselves for, for those that are wheelchair-bound. And then we have a butterfly grove. You may know that the, the gardening program is quite expansive at this K through sixth grade level, so we've integrated some raised planting beds in outdoor gardening areas. One thing that we've been looking at is the main entrance sign. We made a presentation earlier on the sign to the SBC. They made a vote to go forward with the design with the fieldstone background, kind of give you a sense, this would be the approach if you're coming up from Route 9, how that sign will sit on the knoll, and this would be the northern entrance. And then if you're approaching from the south, this would be your view kind of back towards Route 9. Moving on into the building, the educational delivery model of project-based learning at this grade level, similar to kind of the building configuration you see at Sherwood. We really wanted to break down the scale of this school. As of right now, the closest you have to a school this size is Floral. This school is actually going to be about 150 more students than Floral. So we want to create these schools within a school, so each wing kind of has this culminating, what we call common room, that allows them to break out for project-based learning spaces. And what we also do is, you'll see, we get for them to help reinforce this sense of community and neighborhood for those students within each wing, so they can take pride in what they're doing and, and support that project-based learning. What you're seeing is a section through the main lobby. If you see those doors, that kind of unifying structure in the middle, to the far right is where we're going to memorialize some of the existing bar reliefs and dedication plaques from the existing Beal School. I'll point those out in another image later on also. And then a section going the opposite direction is looking towards the cafeteria. So all the major core spaces are on the main floor, which is the floor plan to the left. We have the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the main administration, the music for after-hour use. Those are all clustered together, and then we can lock off the academic wings. And there'll be access through both the lower lobby and the upper lobby. Kind of give you a sense of what we're looking at material-wise. It's going to be very similar to Sherwood, just not to the same scale as Sherwood. So we have a lot of masonry, a lot more masonry on this building, so the academic wings are all masonry, you'll see in some of the renderings. And we're using the metal panel, that same system you see at Sherwood intermittently, to kind of introduce a little bit of color in the exterior. We have the same precast base, which is the lower portion of the wall there, very durable for mowing, kids running into, you name it, something that's going to serve the town well. And we're picking very kind of, you know, interesting but conservative colors in the sense that you'll be proud to see this building 20, 30, 40 years from now. Not trying to be overly trendy in the sense of our selection of colors, but something that is inviting and welcoming to the students. So this is a view of the main entry. As you see, that larger element you may or saw in the sections kind of unifies the whole buildings. We have an entry canopy for students getting dropped off on the bus loop, which is right in the front there. This is a closer look. We picked translucent material panel for this canopy, so it didn't feel like kids were coming into kind of a tunnel cave-like area, welcoming, uplifting. What you're seeing on the left-hand side below the canopy there is the kitchen and servary for the cafeteria. Beyond, the window to the right side and entry, that's the waiting area. Parents were coming to pick up their students, they'd be waiting right in that front entry there. This is a view in the courtyard from the back, so that main element runs right out through the back, forming what is the media center. So the media center kind of has a two-story space. There's a maker space in the media center for further kind of enhance the project-based learning. And there's a, this is the, like I said, the butterfly grove. It has some other materials. I'm going to have Natalie speak a little bit about our advancements to the interior design, but this is also the view that parents would have for pickup and drop-off. We're showing cars as if it was an extended event after hours where parents could park overflow. So we're duly using the paved play area like you guys are doing in a lot of your other schools at this grade level. And as you can see, they also have a canopy that leads into the lower lobby entry. And Natalie's going to talk a little bit more about the interior.
Yeah, so we've been meeting, you know, periodically with the school district on the design and the materials that we're developing for the school. And yesterday, we met with them to update them on what we're working on right now, which is getting into the interior design a little bit more and the finishes and the color schemes. And so these are showing kind of where we're at right now. This is the main lobby as you walk in, and you kind of see all the core spaces from here, looking at the end of the lobby towards the media center. And then you can see the gym on the right with some, the display space that Sean was mentioning, that can have student work and also some of the artifacts from the old Beal School. And then, yeah, to the left's cafeteria and music rooms with this main stair that also connects the lower lobby. And you can see some of the materials we're using with the natural materials, terrazzo and then wood look, P-LAM, and a custom graphic that we're developing for the inset in the lobby as well. And then this is a view of the cafeteria that's just to the left, right off the lobby. You can see the stages in the cafeteria with this nice splay design, also bringing in some of the same materials from the lobby, like the wood look, P-LAM. And also the ceiling has a metal plank wood look as well, with some fun lighting and also a lot of glazing to let in some natural light with a view out to the paved play area to the south. This is a view of the media center. It's part of this core spaces, but on the lower lobby, lower level, so it's connected to the lower lobby with a view up to the main lobby area with this custom graphic and, you know, L form that kind of shoots through the whole building, unifying all of these core spaces. It's a very large media center. We have a double-height space, and then it steps down into the area with the stacks, and then the maker space at the end, which you can catch a glimpse of there. This is the lower lobby view, where you come in from the pickup-drop-off area, having the same materials as the main lobby. We want the students to feel like they're still coming into a main lobby. We have the double-height wall that we're developing, just to have a fun, make a fun space for the students, incorporating also the existing, one of these existing murals from Beal currently. And it's called Make Your Mark mural. But we are in communication with the artist, and he is excited to work in this new school with this piece of art, and then potentially another piece of artwork. with this piece of art and then potentially another piece of artwork. Here is a typical classroom view. Most of our classrooms do look like this particular view. You can see the teaching wall here and also the cubbies that we have incorporated into the room and ample storage under the windows. So just showing, giving you a feel of what this is going to look like. This is the color palette that we're developing with our interior design consultant. It's just showing how we are working with the academic wings to have their own identity and have their own kind of color palette to, you know, identify each wing and then make each wing kind of feel like its own neighborhood with this different color. And you can see the common rooms, we have, you know, some variegated design with the VCT pattern and just kind of making that a little playful. And also working with the code requirements to, you know, make sure we have enough space for egress and stuff like that, so this is where we're at right now.
So those of you that were able to attend the groundbreaking, since last time we were fronting you, we had the groundbreaking. It was a great event, very well attended. As you could see, the site was under demolition. The further demolition has been done. We have a video at the end, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the site. Those of you that were able to experience the VR experience that we brought to you, it's still available on our website. Previously, we were kind of soliciting people's email addresses to try to be able to send you some additional updates about Beal, but we've unlocked the content, so if you go to LPAA.com/Beal, you can experience a lot of the, we have six views, three inside, three outside. We're going to continue to update them, so feel free to kind of go in it, pop your phone up and take a twirl, and you'll get to see what some of the major spaces in the building will look like. But to kind of give you a live view of, pretty much as live as we can get, this video was taken yesterday. So the Public Building Division has procured a contract with this company, Northeast Drone Works, to get at least two shots per month as construction progresses, and these will be uploaded to the Beal project website for those that can't make it to the site or when the roads closed off and they, you know, it's not safe for you to be near the construction site. You can actually get a sense of what's going on. So right now, Fontaine's on-site with their hazmat and abatement company and their demolition company. As you can see, the nursery building in the back right, which used to house the temporary library, is now gone. The abatement is complete, they're just finishing up some of the demolition. They're starting in on the habilitation buildings now. They're hoping to finish the abatement and demolition by the end of this month. You'll really get a sense of just how vast and how big of a site this is. In the meantime, the site contractor has been setting up all the fencing, all the, you know, stormwater runoff, soils management. What you're seeing here is a barn lot. We were very fortunate that one of the buildings, they had filled the entire basement with fieldstone. And it was filled to the brim, so we were able to bring in a crusher and utilize that stone to be able to develop structural fill for the site, for the project, which is great. A huge asset to the project in the sense that we already knew we were working with some difficult soils and being able to find something like that was great. But as I was mentioning, they're working to make sure water runoff is mitigated, and they're currently stripping the loam on the site to be reused in the planting and grass areas outside of the main ring road where the students are. We're bringing in all clean twelve-inch topsoil inside the ring road for wherever the students would be occupying the site due to the naturally occurring arsenic. But as you're seeing, this is the demolition going on, and I hope to have more updates for you guys on the website. And Keith Baldinger will be working with, you know, the town to make sure those get up as they are shot. Do you have any other questions? The video is going to run for probably another minute or so. Anything you have, we'd be happy to answer.
While that's running, two questions. When do you anticipate they'll actually be working on foundations?
So we, the drawings that just went out are being bid, so they hope to have leveled bids of those pricings by the end of this month. So then after that, it'll probably be two to three weeks for them to finally get a signed contract with them. And we plan to actually have all the concrete, they're hoping to have the concrete work done before we hit any winter conditions and be swinging steel over the winter. So quickly, very quickly.
My other question is, how soon is the steel going to arrive on-site? And the only reason I'm asking is because of all the trade issues and tariffs.
Yep.
That, I understand, Mr. Kane, that the pricing actually has been pretty good, but...
Yep, and we'll know that for sure, how it's coming in. So there's four to six bidders, I think, right now roughly for steel that have taken out documents. So it's going to be competitively bid. As far as when they're purchasing is, once they put in their bid, I mean, they're going to be locked into their price at that point. So we will know that very, very soon, and I think we're hitting it at a good point because this, it's gotten plenty of attention from people we like to see on projects, so.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'd just like to mention two things. Obviously, the priority is the educational program, but between Bob Cox being on the building committee and Keith Baldinger having taken his job, we're learning from what has worked in other buildings or options that we'd prefer, and that was Sean's earlier reference to concrete in certain areas for weed whacking or just the kids playing, to a certain type of tiles. In other words, we've learned what works and doesn't work, and we're trying to make sure that those elements fit within the building. Not a sexy aspect of the project, but I think an important worthwhile one.
Yeah, for the durability and the long-term maintenance of it. But one other question, is the cafeteria going to be air-conditioned?
Yeah, the building is going to be fully air-conditioned, one hundred percent of the building.
Oh, okay.
So this is being looked at as the new year-round program site. So this would actually replace Floral where they're currently looking at, that's the hope.
Okay.
Because not only will it have larger spaces, it will have greater capacity, and you'll have that option for full air conditioning, never mind parking. With overflow parking, we'll have three hundred and fifty parking spaces.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I think the air conditioning piece of it is very important, just as we see our climate getting warmer in the summer and also staying, it seems like it's shifted almost, whereas September and October are very hot. But also, when you're going to be running a year-round program, it's important to have a space for those students where they can be comfortable, I think, and not overheated. I think especially sometimes it's our special education students that are participating in the year-round programming. I just commenting on the accessibility of this building and of the playground spaces, and the hallways are very wide, it's just, it's a very welcoming feel. I think you did a really great job of bringing like nature in and making it feel very welcoming in that regard, bringing in light. I was a teacher for nine years, and so I appreciate the touches that you're putting in the building to make it feel welcoming to the students and to the parents that will be using the space for so many years. I was thinking about the butterfly grove, and that made me think about the kind of things that you're going to be planting there. Is that how you plan to bring in the butterflies, is by the plants that you put in the...
There will be some flower-bearing trees, whether they will, you know. It's kind of the old adage, you build it, they will come up, we don't know if they will. But yes, there will be specifically some trees that are flower-bearing in that area in the hopes that it can be populated with insects like butterflies.
And then you mentioned memorabilia from the current Beal building, and none of us really know right now what's going to become of that building. What kinds of things are you able to kind of capture? Because I know something that I always look at, and I know we had talked about it at one of the reuse, you had talked about it at one of the reuse committees that I had sat in on, that top portion, like I think it's called a keystone or...
Yep.
At the top of the building.
That actually has a school name on it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think that would be something that would be great to be able to preserve if the current Beal School is no longer.
Yeah.
Is there any way to do something like that when you don't, when you aren't able to build it into a building?
There are, and one of the things that we had mentioned is potentially using it on-site. I mean, it is built for the exterior. Trying to find a place for it in the building after the fact, not knowing it. We haven't designed it to live in the building. I think we could find a place for it to live outside on the project site for sure. I mean, we have, I hate to, without running it by other people, obviously, their locations, but I think we have some really great locations that it could be housed, and it'll be viewed, and the students would interact with it. But as far as the things we are bringing, the bar reliefs, the larger war memorial relief you see that's in the vest field when you first come, that's going to be memorialized right in the main lobby. The dedication plaque from when this build, the original building committee for the high school, junior high, senior high, when it was built is also going to be there. And we're also going to have a plaque made up to recognize the gentleman that the gymnasium was named after also. So those things, those things will be rolled in.
We take our history very seriously here in Shrewsbury, and to see it preserved and memorialized and honored in such really creative ways means a lot to the community.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
Mr. Kane?
Just one point, the building committee tasked the team with coming up with a couple of options. Should the building go a certain way? And should that piece of the building be able to be maintained and moved successfully? Whether it's outside the main entrance, if you will, off to the side, or some other location within the property itself.
That's good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No? Does anybody else on the building committee have anything to add? No? Well, looks great so far. I drive by there a couple of times a week, getting excited. Made it tough to see what's going on with all that screening in front. Now I got to drive into the soccer field parking lot to see what's going on, but it looks great. Thank you, that was a good presentation, gave us a good idea of where you are, appreciate it. Thank everybody for all the hard work. I was on two building committees, and I know how much work it takes and the time involved. And thank everybody for the work that you've done, and you guys for the great design work you do, so thank you.
Appreciate it, we always enjoy working with you guys also, thank you.
Dr. Smith? Mr. Paul, just quickly, one thing I'll add, there's actually a new piece of news is that the building committee has heard in the past that the educational plan that was developed with Mr. Girardi along with Amy Clod, our assistant superintendent of curriculum, and Meg Bolcito, our assistant superintendent of student services, with three primary officers, the MSBA cited it as one of the highest-quality education plans they had ever reviewed. And I was contacted by the MSBA a couple of weeks ago. They are asking if they can use it as an exemplar for other building projects that are coming in their pipeline. So I thought that was a real credit to the folks who worked on that project and Paul and the others. So it will be, once they finalize that and post it on their website, we'll serve to communicate that to the public, but another feather in the cap of the folks working on this project who have done such an excellent job.
Wow, that's great, great, thank you, thanks for your work. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have... Thank you very much.
Thank you. Two building committees.
Excuse me?
What, the high school?
Well, it was the high school in the Oak Middle.
That's right, I forgot about that.
It just unrolled into the other, it's like seven years, whatever it was. In any event, okay, moving down to new business. Next order of business is to review and act to consider and vote on adopting a proposed order of taking of the easements for public street purposes for the widening of Lake Street affecting the properties at 190 and 192 Lake Street in Shrewsbury. Mr. Mizik, how do you want to just review that with the board?
Sure, so whenever the residences were constructed at 190, 192 Lake Street, the developer who owned those lots took easements along the, between the roadway and where the existing stone walls were constructed and held those easements off the deeds whenever they were transferred to the current owner. And the purpose of those easements were for the widening of Lake Street and the public right-of-way. At that time, those easements were never transferred to town and recorded. And we are looking to memorialize that action that was supposed to have taken around the closing on those properties through this order of taking, which will enable the realignment of Lake Street as discussed with this project. So we are looking for the board to take affirmative action on the order of taking of these easements, which we will record with the registry.
Okay, so and there is actually a law at the edge of that, right? So it's not going to, the physical taking already has been made in the sense that they built the walls further back where the easement is supposed to be. Okay, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor have signified.
There was a draft motion included in?
Yep, there is a draft motion.
You can run it and read it.
Okay, well, you voted to read it, so.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move the board one, find and decree that public necessity and convenience require the taking permanent easements for public street purposes. Said easement areas being shown is eight-and-a-half-foot-wide easement for future street widening on a plan recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 888, Plan 119 and 2, that the board adopt the order of taking as presented to take said easements over in and through properties known as and located at 190 and 192 Lake Street as authorized by vote of town meeting, and to authorize the town manager and town council to do all things necessary to record a copy of this order of taking at the Registry of Deeds and to provide notice of the taking, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 79 of the general laws.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. Thank you for reminding us, Mr. Simon, I forgot about that. Item nine is to review and act on a license agreement with Edward Parquette, DBA Parquette Farms, for the property on the east side of 214 Lake Street for farming and agricultural uses. This is a continuation, it's a new agreement, but it's a continuation of what's been happening on the property. There's no other changes in it, right?
Yeah, there's no changes. We, as you had mentioned, we held a similar agreement with Mr. Parquette while it was under state ownership and through subsequent subletting as we were the L C. So this is just a change because we are now the owners of that property.
Can we just, can we just proceed with a motion to sign the agreement?
Yeah, move to, I believe it has my signature, so authorize the manager to sign the agreement.
Okay, and we have a motion to have the manager sign the agreement with Mr. Parquette?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, so voted. Item 10 is to review and act on a road race request for the 2030 annual Spirit of Shrewsbury 5K Run and Fun Walk on Saturday, September 28th, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at Ian Park. Motion?
So moved, bro.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, so voted. Item 11 is to review and act on the special one-day common victory license for the 24th Annual Spirit of Shrewsbury, September 27th, 2019, to through September 29th, 2019, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The Oak Middle School, 45 Oak Street, in the senior center, 98 Maple Ave.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post, so voted. Item 12 is to review and act on a one-day beer and wine and one-day common victory license for David Anthony Finley, St. Mary's Parish, for St. Mary's Family Festival, 20 Summer Street, September 12th, 2019, to September 16th, 2019.
Move or approve?
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, so voted. Item 13 is to review and act to sign the draft environmental impact report to be submitted to MIBR for Centec Park North. Mr. Mizik, do we have anything in particular we need to do with this?
No, the board doesn't need to take any action. You don't need to sign anything, but you can take action to allow us to submit the report. These are responses to questions that we received.
Okay.
Motion that we submit the report.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, so voted. Item 14 is to review and act on a road closure request from Patricia Wolf, 44 Oak Street, for the closure of Gil Ave on September 14th, 2019, from 3:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. This is a request that came in because there is going to be a wedding on-site, and the family actually owns property on both sides of Gil Ave, and they want to be able to walk across freely. My understanding is the police department did not have any concerns with that, and the neighbors signed off that they're okay with it, so. Any other questions or...
Motion approved, second.
Okay. We have a motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, so voted. Okay, item 15 is to review and act to appoint a delegate, an alternate delegate to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 2020. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 2020. We have, what now? I forgot, write that down. Who is it that?
Manarmenti and Kathleen Colhane.
Right.
Are interested.
Yeah, Kathleen, it just got off the planning board, she wants to be on it, and Matt expressed interest in continuing to be the alternate, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So who's the delegate, and who's the alternate? Kathleen would be the delegate, and Matt would be the alternate, unless somebody else has a different.
No, so moved. I just wanted to make sure the alignment was understood by.
Second.
Okay. Okay, we have motion second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Voted. Item 16 is a draft of a policy, actually, it's a rewrite of Policy 25, right? And it's really just the beginning. Wanted to get some input from the board so that the manager could go back and refine it. The idea is that there are neighborhoods that have been, as you all know, some neighborhoods have been affected pretty severely with the manganese issue, and the board's intent is to have some form of abatement for the people who had extended difficulties and in areas that we recall hotspots that were continually having the problem. So having said that, does anybody have any comments?
I had two, Mr. Chairman. In the version I reviewed, there seemed to be a question as to whether it should be neighborhood-specific or not. I don't think it should be neighborhood-specific, because it can pop up in various locations. And the standard in my mind would exist, whether it was continual or spotty, if you want. And then on the second page, I recall there being a question of how it should run. I think it should remain enforced through December of 2020, and then reviewed annually from there on.
Right, okay. Yeah, I don't know that neighborhood was used in the, I think.
There was a question. Be a draft geographic area, but it's a good point.
There was a question. Yep.
Yeah, I just thought it should be town-wide, because you don't know if it'll pop up, and then you obviously know from your past experiences where the particular neighborhoods have had a very difficulty.
Right. Okay, anything else, Mr. LeBau?
I, I mean, I realize that the question I ask has ramifications if the answer is yes, but is this strictly looking forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, as far as abatements go, I mean, we obviously understand areas of historic impact. It's not like we're going to reset the button on where the discoloration is, but we would not be able to abate bills that have already been paid.
Why not? Why not abate a future bill? Based on a problem? We had some people who ran their water for extended periods of time that the meter was not off, or that we haven't read the meter before and after. So I think, I mean, I think maybe you might want to have some internal discussion about that and see if, I could think of a handful of people in particular who had serious, serious problems that went on for a long time. So maybe there's some other way to address that, but.
That's, Mr. Chairman, that's why I raised the question with some, I wasn't sure, I mean, sure what I was, where I was getting us into. I don't want to establish a policy, you know, kind of a the cow's already out of the barn kind of policy that most of the damage had been done, so to speak, and we're contemplating incidents in the future only. I know how difficult it may be to do some kind of look back, but I just want to think about that and talk about that. I mean, not necessarily in great detail right now, but just want to think that through.
And maybe they could be, you have to figure out logistically if it's possible to do it, but maybe it, I mean, there's got to be a time limit or a start date.
Correct. I would agree with that, yep.
And, you know, what that might be, but, I mean, anything else?
Just on that point, I would, I went into this thinking that it was not only forward-looking, but to cover those egregious cases in the rear.
Right.
Because I know when I got calls, I encouraged people to document a note to the water department or the manager's office, and to take a picture of the meter, and then the post when they stop running, because as you alluded to in a couple of cases, people ran water for two days. So obviously, you can, you can look at their quarterly usage and see that there was a massive spike, and I think with some decent judgment, you can, you can figure that out. So I do think, I went in with the assumption that we were looking forward and backwards.
So did I.
Just a point of information.
Okay, all right, so the manager can continue working on that with staff and then bring something back to the board. Ms. Cassia, do you?
So I sort of looked at this as bringing some guidelines in place for the situation that we're seeing happening. So I feel like when we are having these cases of people that are experiencing having to run their water for two days, I think a lot of them have already come and asked the question about an abatement, and possibly have received the abatement. And so while I agree that we probably will have some people that come forward and say, this happened to me, whatever, two quarters ago, I think a lot of those people probably have already been in contact with the water department. It's a good point to consider, but I think it's most important going forward that we bring in this consistency, because we all might be telling people something different as to what to do when they need to run the water. I know last week I was helping someone, and I gave the same advice as Mr. Kane, take a picture before, take a picture after, let send that to the water department, kind of thing. So I like the idea of putting some guidelines in place in writing for people who maybe aren't able to, like, remember everything that we're telling them when they're in the middle of not being able to do laundry, or there's black water coming into their tub or something like that. The other point that I was thinking about is number five, where it says the adjustment is to be made as a credit on the next bill to be issued. To me, if I've had to run my water for two days, and I open up my water bill and it's significantly higher than what I was anticipating, to have to pay that and then wait another quarter to see the abatement, I mean, for a lot of people, that's a hardship. And I, I mean, I've heard time and again that, you know, there are people that don't have hundreds of dollars put aside in case of emergency. And so running into a situation like that could be difficult for people who have run the water to make it clear, and now they're faced with having to come up with the money to meet the water bill, and then waiting that time before they get the relief. So I guess that was just something in the back of my mind. I think that it should say, sort of like with property tax abatements, that the water and sewer account needs to be in good standing in order to receive the abatement also. You can't be someone who's chronically not paying the bill.
Good point.
Just some thoughts.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Did you want to say something?
No, no, no.
Okay. So if you have any other comments, get them to the manager, and he'll work that through. Okay. Item seven, no, I guess we're on correspondence now, so.
Yep.
Okay. Seventeen is an email dated July 22nd, 2019, from Kevin Krasinski, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, about a public hearing, or a public meeting notice that occurred on August 6th, so noted. Item 18 is an email dated July 22nd, 2019, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the fiscal year 2020 budget update, key figures in local initiatives, funding. I think we've all got a chance to look at that. You've seen all that information, correct? So noted. Item 19 is an email dated July 24th, 2019, from Rachel Missile, 23 Cypress Ave, regarding the proposed tobacco restrictions. I believe those are actually, we were just copied on those, correct? And that those went to the Board of Health? No, actually, okay, let's see. Sent it to both of us, okay. But anyways, those have already been to the Board of Health, so for that hearing, so noted. Item 20 is a letter dated July 24th, 2019, from Kevin Mizik regarding commission on disabilities appointment. Diane Tenelli was appointed to a three-year, a three-year appointment to expire on June 30th, 2022. Item 21 is an email dated July 25th, 2019, from Maria Goldsmith, Office of Leasing and State Planning regarding Commonwealth search for lease space, so noted. Planning, Ms. Last may have seen that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Item 22 is a letter dated July 26th, 2019, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the Board of Health public hearing on tobacco regulations. We know that was submitted, I think she gave testimony there, right? No, she, she did give testimony, okay. Item 23 is an email dated July 19th, from Gil Aslanian, 285 Main Street, regarding banners. Ms. Aslanian had mentioned that she saw banners in another community that basically had pictures and names of veterans that were put up, similar to how we have the Spirit of Shrewsbury thing and stuff like that. It's my understanding that this has been sent to Justin Souzer, our Veterans Agent, and discussing it with John Lavery to see if, if that could, if it was possible to work that into the Selco schedule, because there are a lot of changes. I've seen them in other towns. It's a nice idea if people are interested and want to do it, so I guess they'll be getting back to us on that shortly. Item 24 is an email dated July 31st, 2019, from Sinam Zaire, Zaire, H. J. Lane, regarding a policy statement from AAP about racism. Mr. Mizik, you were looking into that and a few of the departments, and you're not done with that research?
No, I haven't, I haven't completed research, but I have reached out to various departments and trying to gather as much information we can, and looking into the towns, the reference that other towns have established such committees, and then I'll be happy to reach back out to the board and with my findings and for conversations with Mr. Zaire.
Okay, thank you. Any? Okay. Item 25 is an email dated July 31st, from Cal Brian, Massachusetts Office on Disability regarding the Municipal ADA Improvement Grant Program FY20 Cycle Announcement. That is noted, but we are, or we either have or we are in the process of putting a grant application together. Item 26 is a letter dated August 1st, from State Representative Hannah Kane and Senator Michael Moore regarding the FY20 budget update, so noted. Item 27 is an email dated August 2nd, from Derek Grillo, Struck Catering, 130 Hamilton Street, Worcester, for a 12C event at 206 Muncegum and Ave on August 3rd, so noted. Item 28 is actually the same for August 4th, so noted. Item 29 is an email dated August 5th, from Chief James Vona regarding the ADT Lifesaver Celebration. The chief had sent us information that the town is being awarded a $5,000 grant from ADT as part of their program of, ADT's program, when one of their alarm systems go off and they call and they get rapid response from the public safety departments. There was, there was a fire several weeks ago or a month so ago where that had happened, and ADT likes to recognize the fire departments when that positive outcome occurs. There's going to be an event on August 27th, actually at the person's house, and then another celebration, continuation of it in Waltham. So if people want information on that, they can contact our office, and we can give you the locations. Item 30 is a letter dated August 5th, from Bernard Cahill Town Planner regarding recommendations to establish an affordable housing trust. There was some background information that Mr. Cahill had given us. On August 27th, that is, this topic is going to be an agenda item, and a representative from the Mass Housing Partnership is going to come in to tell us how that whole trust establishment works and to answer questions that members of the board may have. Item 31 is a letter dated August 5th, from Rachel Bollone, PO Box 143 North Row, regarding the streetlights in the center. This resident actually lives in Shrewsbury, but has a North Row PO Box for some reason, commenting that some of those, the vintage lights up in the center kind of tie it and probably could use a coat of paint in some of the work, so we could pass that along to DPW if it hasn't already made it there. Item 32 is a letter dated August 8th, from SDEP to Ronald Wagner, 67 Main Street, regarding Wagner Motorsports, 700 Plantation Street, Worcester, request for info, for information, and that is noted, we were copied on that, obviously. Item 33 is a letter dated August 8th, from Kevin Mizik to Robert Holland, 8 Raymond Ave, regarding appointment to the BL Reuse Committee. I believe that that is all we have this evening. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Voted. Okay, thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Good evening.